...heritage and to Bridgewater's story, but now it's so much more.
A hub of art and culture.
A home to events and celebrations, to the things that we hold dear and that make us special.
To experiences that are universal. And now, we need you.
The Bridgewater Museum Commission is looking for new members.
For just a few hours of your time each month, you can help the museum grow.
Help shape programming to welcome new residents and to make them feel at home.
Help to tell stories that need to be heard.
And help Desperay Museum thrive as a center for heritage, art, and culture in our community.
For more info or to apply, visit bridgewater.ca/serv.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gauss Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So, we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So, each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but, I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So, everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now, we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, so you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, boot camps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
This isn't the museum that you remember.
It's still a home to Lunenburg County's heritage and to Bridgewater's story, but now it's so much more.
A hub of art and culture.
A home to events and celebrations, to the things that we hold dear and that make us special.
To experiences that are universal. And now, we need you.
The Bridgewater Museum Commission is looking for new members.
For just a few hours of your time each month, you can help the museum grow.
Help shape programming to welcome new residents and to make them feel at home.
Help to tell stories that need to be heard.
And help Desperay Museum thrive as a center for heritage, art, and culture in our community.
For more info or to apply, visit bridgewater.ca/serv.
Good evening, folks. We call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order, and I'll start by just reminding people that the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaqie, which is the ancestral territory of, ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and we are very privileged to be here. And this afternoon, councillor Fager and I had the pleasure, along with Patrick Hurdle, to meet Melissa Labrador and look at the new panel that's in front of Bagenouska Park. Gorgeous artwork. I don't know, councillor Fager, if you want to maybe just touch on that for a second?
Nope. So, I guess with downtown planning and Patrick Hurdle's work, we were able to have Melissa Labrador, as you mentioned, a local artist, do the Mi'kmaq. If you haven't already seen it, to pop down to Bagenouska Park, there's a panel right there on the sidewalk. So, it's beautiful with the canoe, and she's done some vibrant colors on it. And there's also the QR code that will take you to the link, but it's definitely worth popping by to see, so we're very grateful to have that added at our downtowns.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks. Looking at the agenda, are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, kind of motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Deputy Mayor Tanner, seconded by councillor Conklin. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Are there any announcements from members of council? Not yet. As summer begins to get into full swing, I'm sure we'll have some announcements on different activities. I will just note that June 19th, there'll be a proclamation for the Operation Smile Canada, which is a global medical charity providing free surgeries and medical care to children born with cleft conditions. And so, posted on the website will be that the longest day of smiles will be on June 19th in the town of Bridgewater. Anything else? No? Then we're right down to presentations. So, a presentation on a Built Heritage Award. So, come on down. If you want to go to the podium to speak, and then we'll ask the folks if you want to come down to the frontier.
Okay. My name is Mike Williams, and I'm a member of the Heritage Advisory Committee, and it is my great pleasure to introduce Bonnie and Jim Holland, who are the owners, and I'm going to say the caretakers and the inheritors of the wonderful 41 Phoenix Street. They have done an excellent job in maintaining and creating the atmosphere that does honor to the building. So, I thank you, and I'm sure anybody who walks by that building thanks you. The 41 Phoenix Street was constructed in 1895. It's a Gothic Revival. It's a beautiful house, and it would be a treat for any of you guys to go down there and have a looky-loo. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, take care.
All right, moving along in our agenda, we have a time delegation from Andrew McKenzie talking about traffic and safety concerns, and a traffic calming request for Star Street. So, I'd invite you to come down to the podium and just introduce yourself, and the floor is yours. You've got 10 minutes. That doesn't include questions and stuff from council.
Sure. My name is Andrew McKenzie. I'm a resident of Star Street. Been a resident for about four years, or just coming up from four years now. And over the last four years, we've had increased traffic, and I'm talking to the point where we've had people road-raging up there, side by side. I got road-raged one day, and they chased me down for a couple of blocks, and then when they finally pulled me over, beeped off me, and then they drove off. And of course, when I called the local police department, it took me two months and three phone calls before anybody actually responded back to me, which quite frankly is disgraceful. So, you know, in all fairness, we've had, ever since we started this petition, we've had a, you know, we've had a breakthrough. We've had a bit more police presence. We've had the signage up. The neighbors and I have been doing, putting our own signs up, and of course, you know, what started this whole thing was, again, we called the police a number of times over the years about the traffic, and we called the town about it as well. And, you know, the response largely was, well, take down the license numbers. Well, if I could take down the license numbers, they'd be going slow enough that I wouldn't have to worry about them. I mean, they're going up there at a fair rate of speed. So, what started this whole ball rolling is I worked from home. A white came knocking on my office door and told me that the neighbor up the street just said there was an accident in front of their place, and they'd lost their dog. So, I went up there to talk to the neighbor, and of course, their little boy, he's sitting there, and he says, "Are you the doctor?" And I said, "Pardon me?" He says, "You're the doctor." It's a four or five-year-old child. And the grandmother's sitting there, she says, "He thinks that you're the doctor here to save his puppy." Well, what happened was, is when I got talking to the neighbor, is that the vehicle was coming up the street at a high rate of speed, and their dog ran across the street because it saw a crow, and they're trying to tell the traffic to slow down, and the driver didn't even slow down. One eye, it went right over the dog and kept on going. And the thing is, is that we've been having, this is our life on this street now. And I'm sure you guys by now have seen the letter from my neighbor, Joanne McFadden. I live on the corner of King and Stark, so as I call it, King Street Highway and Star Street Launchpad, because that's exactly what it is. You know, before I came over here tonight, my neighbor across the street pointed out that his wife was backing into the driveway, and somebody came around the corner, and rather than stopping and waiting, went around them, right up, almost up on the sidewalk to go around, to go around them. And I thought, this is the life we're leading. You know, right today, it's a dog. Could be one of the children that live on the street. There's a number of them now. There's a lot of people making a great deal of effort to spruce up the neighborhood. We've got new families moving in there all the time, and they're pretty lucky to take pride and care in their homes. The last few days, we've been getting a lot of truck traffic. And when I say truck, I'm talking dump trucks, cement trucks, semi-trucks, coming up and down a residential street. We pay the taxes on that street. They don't. We live there. They don't. It's a short little street. The kids racing up down the street. They stopped in front of my neighbor's place there one day, and basically slowed down to look at the sign and then tore off. I mean, this is disgraceful. I mean, this is just bad manners. You know, and of course, my neighbor here reached out to the principal of the school, and they really, he got the cold shoulder about the whole thing. You know, I mean, these kids are, I'm not saying it's all kids, because it's not. It's adults, it's even people with handicap stickers on their windows. They come down there at a fair rate of speed, and really, what we're looking for, and again, we realize that, you know, it takes a bit of time, but you know what, these presence has been good. But again, it doesn't slow them down for more than a few days. We put up, you guys put up the street sign, or the sign that read the speed, and that worked for a few days, but that novelty wore off real quick, and some of the kids were using it to see how fast they could go up the street. You know, somebody's going to get hurt, and what we're asking for is some sort of traffic calming. Now, I come from the West Coast, and I had to do this once before. And I had two people racing down the street one day, to the point, they were drag racing down the street. It was very room for two vehicles. So, I ran to my home to call 911. My neighbor called 911. Turns out, it was a local cop. It was his wife and their son that were drag racing through our neighborhood. I mean, this can't happen in this day and age. Somebody's going to get hurt. So, again, what we're asking for is some sort of traffic calming, whether it be local traffic only. I would prefer, we would prefer speed bumps. You know, the kind we had back home was they were a pillow. That way, the larger trucks, if they need to go over, it's emergency vehicles, go over it completely. It doesn't interfere with their travel. You know, pair of those several places down the hill would do the trick. But again, you know, we're getting so much traffic on King Street. Again, I've been here for four years. I get woken up at 4:00 in the morning by the traffic now. They're coming in, they're coming down King Street, and I know that, I've been driving for over 40 years, so I know what 50K looks like. It's not 50K they're doing. It's a lot faster than that. They're coming into the bends on, before the bridge. It's insane. It is absolutely insane. With the construction that's going on on King and Victoria Road, it's just increasing. Ours is the new bypass. And part of the reason why they use ours as the bypass, by and large, is because there isn't a way to turn at King and Victoria Road. So, we're looking for some sort of traffic calming, please. I mean, really, before anybody gets hurt.
I appreciate you coming and sharing that. It's never easy to speak in front of council, I know. It can be, with cameras and council, it can be a little nerve-wracking, so I appreciate you standing up and sharing that with council. I wish I could say you're alone in this concern, but we have a number of streets where we've received concerns about speed and about traffic, and it's one of the reasons why a dedicated traffic officer was put in this year's budget to be hired, and will be hired by the police department, sole focus on traffic and these kinds of issues. If you can just come to the podium, just because we're live streaming, so I want to be able to hear.
My name is Rick Lapoidia, and I live at 52 Star Street, and I got really involved in the traffic issue last year with a couple of the constables. In fact, we went to the school, sneaking around the parking lot, identifying cars. In fact, he actually knew some of the drivers of the cars that were speeding on our street. And again, as mentioned, double speeding, double racing up our street, uphill. Somebody comes over the crest, could be my wife. You know, it's not rocket science, and something really does have to be done about it. I feel, although, you know, it's difficult to prove, most of them are students. Most of the people that are real violators are young guys from the school. So, again, no speed signs on our street even. There's not one. That would be a start, I don't think. Rumble strips, you call them, or?
The rumble strips would wake us all up. The traffic pillows would be a good place to start. I mean, I'd be happy to see a few ground caremen being there going up, the speeders going out there.
There's certainly a number of options in terms of traffic calming that we haven't looked at.
We have a list of about 50 residents here from Star Street. Have you seen it?
Yes.
You have seen it, okay.
The vast majority were very jaded. They don't think this is going to bound to a, that's why I wanted them in shock, because they didn't feel like it was really going to happen.
Some of them don't even, wouldn't sign. It's all we've been trying for years to try to get the traffic slowed down on the street. It's hopeless.
Yep. So, all I can tell you right now is that we appreciate you coming, we hear you. It is, so what normally happens is when there's a delegation, we kind of received the information, and now, at a future meeting, council will discuss, what are we going to do about it?
Sure, okay.
So, that, we don't want to make a decision today, because we need to kind of figure out what our options are, but I know that council has concerns about traffic, not just on Star Street, but around the community.
Do you have a time period for a decision on this?
So, this would come back, where staff?
Staff would have to, yeah, council would have to give staff direction to prepare, do some research, and provide some options with respects to traffic calming, and what those would entail, and the budgetary impact, those types of things. So, if you gave that tonight, and I'd have to talk to Matt about, we have another report on the agenda that kind of talks about some things that we have to back away from because of our resource issue in that department right now. So, I'd have to discuss with Matt how much effort it would take to put that together.
So, if you had a discussion with Matt, this could, this could come back to the next meeting just for?
To let you know when?
Yeah, yeah. Soon.
That's a political statement there.
Yeah, I mean, I think, the goal would be at the next meeting to have, to have something where council can direct staff to go look at, to go look at what options are on.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to have some reprieve soon. School will be out, except for the dump trucks, et cetera. I don't know why they have to use our street.
I counted four in an hour yesterday.
Literally start at 4:30 in the morning, and they're using, and they're using Jake brakes.
Yeah, so that's illegal in town, right?
And the thing is, I was asked to get the name off the truck, but the problem is when they're coming down the hill, the signage on the truck is on the opposite side, so I didn't see it.
Doesn't matter. I know what it is.
And again, it's one of the reasons why we're hiring a dedicated traffic officer for traffic enforcement. So, whether the traffic calming measures are something that happens quickly, or something that happens in a little bit more medium term, the traffic officer will be happening in the short term.
Can I join?
You can. You can go to the academy in a while, I guess.
I'd like to be armed.
But I just didn't want you to think that nothing's going to be done. So, even if you don't see a physical speed bump in the short term, or something like that, there is an officer that's, because that budget's been passed, and that position has been approved.
I mean, I think fixing the lights at the bottom of King and Victoria would do a lot of good, because let's face it, there's no turn light there. It's there, but it's not activated. So, everybody uses ours as shortcuts. And I got basically somebody delegated me right from the corner of Victoria Road in York, followed me all the way home, and got really PO'd, and I put out my signal in my driveway, and I stopped, and she sat there for a second, didn't know what to do, but she was so close, I couldn't even see her headlights, and that was the whole way. So, this is the kind of thing we're dealing with. People are getting, again, I got road-raged one day, as I was coming up, because one of the neighbors had parked on the street, and vehicles were on to go around. But I had the right ways. I was coming straight up the hill. No, three cars went around. On the third one, I tapped the horn, just to show my displeasure. The guy turned around and chased me. And again, not cool.
No. Does council have questions, Deputy Mayor?
I do, but. I was just going to ask if our presenters will be informed when this is on a future agenda, so that kept up the date.
It'll be on the June 13th agenda for direction from council.
Okay.
And at that meeting, we'll be able to let council know when we think we'd have an options analysis report for consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Just two quick questions. One quick question and one comment. The McFadden letter references a three-way at the corner of Star and Logan, but I assume that's Star in York?
There's a, no, there's a Star and not King Street.
A three-way at Star and King Street.
That's what she's suggesting. The reason why is because the big dilemma is, is that work is going on at the top of Logan Road. And what the biggest fear is for all of us down there, is that it's just going to increase the traffic load across the content. We've been asked, and right now, we've got what it points to potholes, man-made potholes, by the city, because they put in some inspection access. Every bloody vehicle heads in every morning, starts about 4:00 in the morning, wakes me up, especially if they've got a trailer that shakes the whole house. The whole patch of road there is just, the road breaks me down the best of all this.
Okay. And I guess perhaps with your permission, I'm not sure how this flows, but could these documents be sent through to the police commission, just so the police chief and?
Yeah, they're public documents now.
Four years ago, there were going to seem two vehicles that pulled over on there, that stretch of road.
Yeah, okay.
So, and like I say, they come in there at such a tremendous rate of speed, there ain't no way that it's 30 or 50K going on there. That is well in excess.
One more. Are there certain periods of the day that you notice this? Like, is it like 3:30 when school gets out, and 4:00 AM when the trucks start?
On Star Street, it's.
Around 11:30? 11:30, they go on break. The school students go on break. 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock to 5:30, busy as hell.
So, that might help?
But they're not students. They're a lot of guys, contractor guys, you know, and in all fairness to them too, there's a psychological issue. It's a hill.
Right.
And they're pulling trailers, so they put their foot in it, you know, and they definitely are doing more than 50 kilometers an hour, and it's noisy. You know what the mufflers are like on some of these trucks, it's just.
And of course, there was the RCMP vehicle that went up there, so I was, right, I was stepping this out there to yell at them, and I realized it was a cop car, as he was ramping up the hill.
Yeah, so the trailer that records the speed also records the times and what happens, and so?
In all fairness, you know.
They'll figure out, they'll figure out pretty quick when it's happening and?
Yeah, so 11:30, 12:00, 4:00 to 5:00, 5:30, early in the morning. 8:30, 9:30, 8:30 to 9:30. Unfortunately, the police always come at the wrong time. Seriously, they go and park at the top of the hill. The kids have all got cell phones, so they just phone each other.
I rode the cop park the one day.
You know, it's all those.
Me, and as soon as you come around the corner, you see him? As soon as you crest the hill, you see him?
I mean, I rode with the guys last year. They invited me to go with them, and I could see the frustration. They, they go after one speeder, and he's usually the guy that lets on everybody else going. And it stops as soon as they leave. Way they go again, you know. Yeah, it's difficult. It's a dilemma. It is.
We're happy to work with you. We realize that this is not an easy one to pick her up. Again, we're happy to help.
No, that's great. Thank you. And it's an issue shared with other residents throughout the town, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is? Our next item is the minutes from the May 9th, 2022, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions in that? Hearing none, motion to approve the minutes as circulated. Councillor Conklin, seconded by councillor Fager. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Correspondents for information, we have the 12-month notice letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. So, whenever the province is making changes, I don't know if you were going to speak to that, or?
Just that, it says the head-
Just that, it's just a heads up, that they're doing a number of initiatives this year that could have an impact on municipalities in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. So, they note them there, and the big, the big ones are the Service Exchange, the Memorandum of Understanding with Municipalities, and the Municipal Financial Capacity Grant. Perhaps some of the, the more unknowns, I guess, in terms of where that lands and the impact on municipalities. But the others are there as well. If council has any questions about them, but most of it is just a heads up. We're going to be doing some work, and we'll know before next fiscal year what the financial impact will be, if any.
Well, hopefully, this will be the, the time that the province recognizes that the way funding is distributed is not equitable, anywhere close to equitable, that population funding models versus needs-based funding models don't work, that the communities with the least amount of need tend to get the most amount of money, and that's an inefficient way to distribute taxpayer funds. So, hopefully, we can work with the province and convince them that at least adopting the roads report would have a huge impact, as people in the community complain about potholes, which we have a few. We also get no funding from the province for roadwork compared to roadworks. It's my little rant on that one. Stay tuned.
Coming soon.
Yeah. Our next, going to add reports and recommendations, engineering project deferrals.
And so, council was advised that we have two vacant positions within the engineering department. One is a new position that council created that we've just been challenged to fill. Recruitment is a challenge for everyone, and the town is not excluded from that. So, we've had a development services technician position that we've been trying to recruit for now for approximately six months. And I think Matt has any views again this week, so hopefully, something comes of that. But again, still a challenge. And the Director of Engineering, former Director of Engineering, has left the town, and that's left a vacancy as well. So, we do have Matt Davison, who has been appointed as the Acting Director of Engineering, but Matt had a job. So, that means that there's, he can't do two, so there's at least the equivalent of one full-time position existing that's vacant in terms of work. So, with that, it has a rippling effect throughout the department. It's not just, you can't just hand that off to one person who's already got a plate full. So, it's being handed off to multiple people within the department who already have full plates with tasks and work to be done. So, something has to fall, but they just do not have the bodies to do the work. And it's, even with the increase in the public works crew, it's the, it's the contracted admin side and the supervisory side of that where the challenges come in, and that's where the gaps are, for the most part. So, we've looked at the capital plan. We did advise council that we will have to prioritize that, because we obviously can't do everything. We want to make sure that we have it right. And unfortunately, it's not a matter of just plucking out one and putting in another. It just depends on the resources and the individual that would be tasked with that project. So, if we want some movement in the list, I don't know if we'd be able to answer that on the fly without going back and, and having that discussion with the team. But we did look at the plan with the priorities of having exit twelve A, which is your biggest commitment contractually. So, we looked at, do we have any contractual obligations? Do we have any legal obligations in terms of meeting standards or regulations? So, exit twelve A hit the top with the contractual obligation, and wastewater with a regulatory obligation to meet the standards there. So, those ones, for the most part, the ones that we had to move forward with remained in, remained within that. And then there's the development reviews, and ensuring that those remain a priority. So, in app, when we get subdivision or development agreement applications, there's engineering drawings and details that come in with that that have to be reviewed against the standards, and then there's a little bit of back and forth with the applicant on those. So, what you have in the report, in the main body of the report, is the capital projects that Matt has talked to his team about that feel are being suggested we defer. If we have the resources to do it, we'll start picking away at it. But the way the landscape looks right now, it's something that we're suggesting be deferred. And again, these are, these are projects that we, there's no regulatory or legal or contractual obligation. It's not occupational health and safety, and it's not related to development approvals. So, in here, there's a lot of smaller things, but some of the bigger ones, the Glen Allen Drive sidewalk and parking area, so we had planned to do that work this year. The province is in there right now, working on their access point, and so there's a lot of activity around that spot anyway, so it may be a good idea to push that into the next year regardless, just so that there's, we don't jam everything up there in terms of traffic flow. We have gap. So, council had approved a budget of two eighty-five or thereabouts, and that was for playground and splash pad. It was conditional upon getting a grant to fund fifty percent, and we haven't got the grant to fund fifty percent. We got fifty thousand. So, not what we needed. And therefore, we were proposing to come back with a scaled down, let's just do the playground a piece. But now, staff feel that even though it's a, it's a, it's a nice to have, it's, it's not one of those ones that are necessary in terms of having a contractual or regulatory obligation. So, it's suggested that we not proceed with the construction activity there. We will reassess this one in around September to see where we are with recruitment. And we have had some preliminary conversations with the grantor about, or the funder, about taking the fifty thousand and repurposing that into design, so that we can at least get the design done and ready for the next year. So, we have it fully designed, and we're, and we're ready to roll with construction in the following year. We have a few energy management projects, the capital pieces that were suggested be put aside. And there will be some that we will continue doing. So, the feasibility study, the police station, still do those. I discussed those with our energy onsite energy manager, Miles, and those were, he felt the highest priority in terms of meeting coun, council's plan. And the police, police station had such a fast rate of return that he felt that it'd be so silly to set that one aside. So, we'll be continuing with that. Pearl Street, there are some sewer issues there that do need to be dealt with, and Matt and his team are cognizant of that. And so, while we have it on the list, some of the, they're ordering the materials right now, getting that ready so that if, if we do have the resources come later in the fall, we can proceed, proceed with that. And there's some operational items that, so that's the capital list, but we also have operations and maintenance within our operating budget that we looked at as well to see other things in there that we're not going to be able to do. So, you can see what, what's being suggested there as items that we would not proceed with this year. So, there's some public works garage upgrades to the parking lot. The Centennial Trail, we'd buy the signage, but we have the signage, we just wouldn't install it this year. The Dufferin and York traffic lights, that's, the lights are working. There's nothing that says we have to remove it. So, it's, it's, again, just something that if we can get to, we will. But they're not causing us a problem right now. And it'll be on the list for removal next year, unless we get time to do it this year.
Tammy, I see on this operational, I think we have the parking lot upgraded twice on you.
It's only once.
So, that's really going to affect the bottom line. You get on the next page at the dollars.
Yeah.
So, those both prices would have to be adjusted.
It's just the one. It's supposed to be just one, ten thousand.
Right. That's what I mean. So, when you add your money at the end of the day, it's ten thousand dollars short.
Yep, yep.
Just want to make sure you do that.
Yep. And then we have some other projects that are in council's strategic priority list that do involve the engineering department quite a bit. The development charges and infrastructure charges, that's about how much do we charge for the cost of infrastructure. And that's in their heads and in the, the studies and the plans that are done. So, even hiring a consultant to do that, they need to extract that. So, it takes staff time. There's no way around that one. They can't do that one without having staff involvement in that. The flood, so what that, what that means is we wanted to know those numbers so that when exit twelve A, in late, in the, end of the third quarter, we were targeting to start marketing. And part of that is knowing what we would be charging for development and infrastructure charges, right? So, one piece was the sale of the lot, the next was the development and infrastructure charges price, right? At the end of the day, the market will pay what the market will pay. So, some, some of it's a little bit of a, a little bit gray. But we wanted to at least know that before selling. So, what we're suggesting we do is kind of break it up into zones, and look at the exit twelve A, separate from the remainder of the town. We have had some reports done by Design Point that identify future infrastructure requirements for that result from exit twelve A. So, we know that there will be signalized intersections required in a few spots, that there's sewer system upgrades, those types of things. And knowing the costing of those, and coming up with that formula, that will enable us to determine what those charges will be per lot, we're suggesting we look at that separately. But again, it means that we'll have to move that out a bit. So, by a couple months, and it'll be in the fall, which means that it probably would move our marketing piece into the last quarter of twenty-two, twenty-three. And the interchange is not anticipated to be open until the end of twenty-three, beginning of twenty-four. So, we're still, we're ahead of that timing, but we do know that there are people knocking at the door now. So, that, that piece is a little disappointing, but again, it, it takes the staff, not just one person, but the staff within the engine, team within the engineering department, to feed into the consultant, the information that they would need to do those calculations. Flood risk mitigation, we'll just delay that a year. That's part of our plan review, so that's okay to do. Sewer rate transition, this may have to be referred, deferred. Engineering resources are insufficient at the point, but also finance needs to do the asset retirement obligations. It's a new PSAP requirement by the end of this fiscal year. So, it's going to take a lot of Kim's time. And the report that council had was very high level. It didn't drill down into the detail of the impact on accounts. And there's a lot of impact, and a lot of figuring out to do with the sewer rate transition. So, we're just noting that we may not be able to finalize that one for the end of the fiscal year. And then the fraud assessment, that requires participation by all departments. So, we're, Kim worked back from that to say, you know, we needed it done by the end of the fiscal year. We'd have to start it in late fall. So, that's the latest we'll start that. Just, it's not going to start in the spring. The implications by deferring the projects, again, noting that the operating budget would decrease by ten thousand in terms of our savings. These are the, this is if we didn't do these, this is what, what that would look like. And we would come back to council and say, you know, we rate it two hundred fifty-four thousand, maybe we don't, we don't borrow for something that was two hundred fifty. Can we come back with that, or we put that in reserve, or whatever it may be. But I would suggest that these numbers are going to change, depending on, you know, where we, where we think we are at the end of the summer, and if we're fully, have full staff complement, we may be able to do more than what's, what's noted on the list that we can't do. So, these numbers would look different. It's just what it looks like right now. There's also going to be some Public Service Commission capital projects deferred, because they do take some of the engineering staff team to do, like Larry Hood and Justin are involved in those as well. But those are not as great, but we will discuss those with the Public Service Commission. And as I indicated, when we're looking at the capital list, we went, we went through contractual, regulatory, and OHMS requirements to see where the priorities should land. And you do have strategic priorities that are impacted by that. So, the options for council are to approve the list, the list of planned operating capital, I guess, to be deferred as a measure to address the vacancies, understanding that if we do get full staff complement, we'll reevaluate. And defer a decision and refer the matter back. We might not be happy with the list like you see it, and you said, no, we want you to really consider putting this in, and find something to take out to make that work. Or you can revise the list, but we'd be kind of doing that shooting in the dark, not knowing what the impact would be on the other one. So, deferral might be a referral back, so staff can take a look at what we'd have to do to put that in, or something, what we'd pull out to make that work.
Questions on CIO, Counsel McDonald?
So, when you say defer, that means some of these things could happen, both the ones that get to the end of the year and don't happen. Do those end up being carryovers, or do they go back to the budget process?
Don't know yet. Well, no, just smiling, because my preference is, is that they go back to the budget process, and that they get, they get looked at with all of your capital things, right? And then you can prioritize them. If we started the project, then it gets to be a cap, a carry forward, because you've already started down that road. But if we haven't started them, typically, in the last few years, we've been bringing them forward as new things, and saying you need to reevaluate if you even want to do this, because sometimes the things change, right?
Other questions, Counsel Ober.
Yeah, I'm looking at the list that we are doing, I guess, in Saint Philip Street, Public Service Commission water main from Victoria to Logan Road. That's not a problem. But then it says Victoria to Empire. I don't, can't think of any way you can get to Victoria from Empire. It may mean Victoria to High. It meets Empire.
Maybe it's...
I think it's Victoria to Empire along High.
High, yeah, but High's not in there, so...
No, I know. But that's what it is.
That's what I thought it may be, but it probably should be at it.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
Two questions. Tammy, the, the development charges, infrastructure charges for twelve A, there's a comment there about ore result in infrastructure cost sharing for development being done in isolation of a larger strategy.
Yeah.
What does that truly mean? Meaning that, go ahead.
Okay, so you could, council could decide that, let's just set the whole concept of development, infrastructure charges aside. We know to, to put, to run the sewer and water line across, say, two million dollars.
Sure, yeah.
Developers are expected to pay sixty percent of that cost, and, you know, you could do a very rudimentary.
So, so by that, what I hear, I think I hear you saying is that there are ways to sell lands at exit twelve A despite this deferral, and allow us to progress with perhaps some land sales using some kind of formula like that.
Yeah.
Ad hoc.
It's ad hoc, and the risk is, is that as you, as you develop those development charges and infrastructure charges, you may have undersold, or, you know, that type of thing.
Right.
And so, it, that could be the complication in that.
Right, right.
But there are, like, when you look at certain capital cost recovery bylaws that municipal units do, it's as simple as sixty-forty split, or, but it's easier when you're just looking at lots on a street, right? We've got everything in behind that will benefit from that.
Right.
So, it's coming up with, with that.
Okay. And the sewer rate transition, you know, we've been working away at this, picking away at this for a number of years now. And I don't understand the relationship with finance, and why, why, if, if, sorry, explain that one in more detail, so I can get my head straight.
Yeah, so finance is the ones that are actually looking at the impact on each account.
Right. But that's not engineering?
Engineering is involved a bit when it comes to kind of like the, so we find some residential, for example, that have really high water usage, but it's, it's based on, and Matt helped me out with this, but it's based on the size of the pipe, as opposed to their actual water usage and stuff like that.
Right.
So, when finance is looking at the accounts, and they see one for four thousand dollars, and every other residence is like a thousand, I'm still not sure why. But because we, you know, we kind of have those set rates, it, it hasn't been picked up. So, those are the things that they need to drill down into, and engineering needs to be part of that. And it's mainly Audrey and her time and her staff's time to kind of look at those accounts with, with Kim.
Right.
And figure out why, why there's deviations from the norm. And then there's other, there's other accounts that might have multiple connections, and how do we deal with those? And it's just understanding what's in that building and why that finance needs to help with.
So, in an attempt not to slow down this progress we're trying to make, you know, wastewater and so on and so forth, is there an interim solution there? wastewater and so on and so forth, is there an interim solution there versus just deferring it altogether that we can say, okay, in the past, I can't remember what we incrementally increased it by?
So that's what I, Kim is suggesting is, is that we would do that again this year. Is just have a rating increase like we have had to try to level that out a bit.
Okay.
And, and as I say, she's basing the comment based on having to do the, the, well, what you could basically depreciating our assets and doing a calculation on that. So she's, she's suggesting that that might take more of the time to get done than she hopes. But if she's able to, if they're able to get to that, they will. If not, it'll be, as we did this year, a suggestion that we increase the rate again next year as part of that transition.
Okay, so we can't do it now versus, and, and do it now and for, for this item for as long as necessary?
Mm-hmm.
And then play cat, do you mean?
You mean make that decision now to defer, to just increase the rate next year? You, you can or we can reevaluate.
Like, right, change, increase the rate now versus waiting? Am I missing something?
We did that already.
Did you have the budget anyway?
Yeah, so this year we did increase.
So we're still doing that?
Yeah, we're doing that little subtle rate increase.
This doesn't impact this year, it kind of impacts going forward.
Understood.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, got it, sorry.
Other questions, Councilor?
So why are we in such a vulnerable position that the loss of one staff member can have create such chaos with our plans? And what might we do in the future to prevent this? Because this is quite a shocking amount of projects are being deferred for losing one staff person. You don't understand?
Matt, do you want to help me out with that one? I mean, a lot of it has to do with that this person was involved in multiple projects at some scale, often in an approval capacity, right? So you can't, an engineer can't hand that off to a technician to approve that, those types of things. And like the development reviews and those things, while we can pass those off to someone else to review, say Justin, an engineer still has to sign off on them. So now Matt has to be involved in that or Audrey has to be involved in that in addition to Justin who already had things in the doing, right? So it's just, it's, you can't neatly hand it off to one other person. And he wasn't neatly just working on one project that can be handed off.
So are we, are we in a position then that there's not much we can do if this, something like this happens in the future? Or are there steps we can take to prevent this from happening again?
Well, I mean, unless you over resource, right? Which I don't think we want to do.
But you, you, you have a, you had a plan where you have someone to take kind of some of the development approvals.
Yes, we, we just can't, yeah. If we would have had that position filled, it might not have been as much of an impact, but that position hasn't been filled. We haven't been able to recruit for that. That was a development services position that council approved in the fall. And we came and said that we were concerned about the amount of development activity and our ability to respond to that, right? So we just haven't, recruitment is a, a challenge everywhere.
Goes back to the same problem everyone else is having with labor shortage, right? So it's, it's been a struggle to find staff.
So it's really hard to add to that. I mean, all of it is correct thus far. I mean, Larry, very big shoes to fill. He provided mentoring advice to every facet of the department depending on what it, what was going on. So there is a lot of, there's just a lag associated with him leaving and trying to learn from him in his three weeks, whatever time he had left, of what was to, to carry on. Certainly, of course, where Audrey's already filling, I shouldn't be saying names, but there are, we're already pulling a little bit of a double, double duty as it is. We've had a recent changeover in the water department and that environment and services manager is helping with that to get them up to speed. You know, in case of this week, pulling four duties, we have our public works supervisor who's off with COVID, we have our foreman off with COVID, Larry, and the director's gone too. So we're, we're trying to fill the gap as much as possible. And this is also the time, and you know, we can plan as much into budget as we can, but it's really hard to initiate projects until a budget is approved. So at the time in which we start to get things off the ground, the director's gone, who's normally provided advice on whether it be pavement management, most of that work has gone through the director on that. You know, my focus has just primarily been for public works, transit and recreation. Very little time has been spent with transit or recreation as of yet. Most of my time has been in public works the past two weeks. But yeah, the, the development reviews is a big thing that Larry spent a lot of time on, or the director has spent a lot of time on. But there's also all those tiny pieces that, you know, we go to him for the traffic authority on a number of items. So it's, it's, it adds up. Other than saying cliches like the death of a thousand cuts or the straw that broke the camel's back, that's really what it comes down to. And whether we, we talk about resources going forward, we do operate very lean. So, you know, if somebody were to take a week off or vacation, we would feel that just as hard as we would somebody leaving for permanently and trying to fill that role. So, I mean, those are discussions, big picture that we would have to have to, to the only way we can possibly add additional resources and allow them to focus hopefully with some succession planning of another person learning that role. You know, pavement management is one, you know, while there's one person that's dedicated and it has, you know, feedback from myself or the director or, or Justin will say that nobody else really knows that role. So we are, there are risks in our department that we take that I'm very concerned with. But that does come down to a staffing resource and what we can do with succession planning and kind of others learn the role, but not completely filling that role. So we have duplication either. It's a, it's a tight role.
It sounds like succession planning may be part of the answer then?
Or cross-training, right? So.
Sorry, I use those interchangeably depending on what you implement.
Same idea, but you have to have a reason, you have to have the capacity to do that, right? So that may mean investing in resources so that there's the time, the individual has the time to do that cross-training. Because as Matt says, there's just so, so thin down there that, that time's not there. So there are vulnerabilities, as, as Matt mentioned, like we're finding like the pavement management, as you said, is one where that ideally there would be more than one person that knew that or, or the budget on more than one person should know that. But it's just the resources haven't been there to enable that.
So to go back to your, to your question, other steps that we can take to kind of insulate from this, us from this, I guess that comes down to council, that comes down to budget when, when certainly next year, because there has to be. Because we've seen what happens when we have just the departure of one key staff person. But even if that person didn't leave, there's still a huge amount of pressure, as Matt said, if one person goes on vacation. Well, now they might feel pressured that they can't go on vacation because they're the only person that can do that role. And that's, that's not how you retain people and that's not how you have a good work-life balance. And so I think, I think that's the role, those are the levers that council can, can pull because while we can't go downstairs and say, need to do this, this and that, our role is to say, we will give you the budget to, to get the tools you need or the staff you need. So I think, I think there has to be, there has to be a change in, in how we do this because it's, it's a lot of pressure.
There is a lot of pressure and, and staff know where the, the weak points are, right? We do know that. It's, it's, it's like this year we did with the budget, we didn't have the ability to approve more than what we did, right? But there was, we identified public works clerk and there was a few others where we, you know, said that there's some real issues. But it's, it comes down to, to dollars too, right? So it's what are we prepared to live with? And the risk of having, you know, one, that could happen in probably any department. One key staff person goes and we're going to feel it, right? It's just a matter of how much we insulate ourselves from that.
Councilor?
Tammy, if I heard you correctly, we're impacted by two staff positions, not the one.
Well, yeah.
And not only are we impacted by that, but we've had a big changeover in PSC in a short period of time. And even with the wastewater, I mean, it just takes a long time to get the people back in these positions, get them trained and get things working properly. So it's like a tidal wave hitting and until it hits, you don't know what direction to run in.
Yeah. And yeah, you're right, but the, the one position is, is one that we would hope had been filled by now. And when we do bring people in and recruit them, it does take time. So even if we were to bring that development service technician in, unless we get a unicorn, chances are we're going to have to spend some time training that person. And so it may not help with the, help us much for a couple of months until we get that person really equipped.
Deputy Mayor?
So, you know, as Councilor Colas said, this is, this is a substantial list and I'm curious what your strategy is for getting us back on track. Are we going to have to hire four people instead of two or two instead of one?
I think what we need to do is take a good hard look at that capital budget. Because every year I, I do ask that the capital budget be delivered in a manner that the resources are there to do it. And I'm not so sure that that happened.
Okay.
This year, and I, I do know that there were a number of staff that had concerns with the size of the budget because it's $26 million. That's huge. And, and our resources haven't changed. A lot of them are projects of big numbers, but the, the strategy is to, to go through that budget for next year and, and with, with staff and make sure that if it's there, we have the resources to do it. And that means that, that 10-year capital plan might look different in future years.
Other questions? Comments? Councilor McDonald?
Could there potentially be around two of this? I don't want staff to go back and feel like, you know, it's a lot of cuts and it kind of shocked council. And so if we're completely overwhelmed, we can't go back and make, you know, cut more projects. Could there be around two of this to reduce further, defer more projects?
Yeah. And what we're suggesting is, is that we probably would take a look at it again in September, in the summer and see how our recruitment piece goes and the training of the new development tech and, and that, that piece to see if we're in a, to feel better about where we are. And if we're still struggling and having challenges, then, then we'll be, you know, we want to make sure that council's expectations match what we're able to deliver on. So we'll bring that back.
Some of it's disappointing, but we've got some really great staff that we don't want to feel discouraged and potentially lose more, so.
Well, that's, that's a good point to make too, right? Like it, we're in a bit of a situation, so it, I don't want to say it is what it is and make it sound like it's just, it's nothing. This is, this is important and this is a big deal. But staff should be empowered to come back and, and say, we just can't do these things, right? I don't want staff to feel like we're going to sit around here and, and be, you know, staff are as disappointed as we are probably that certain projects can't get done. But at the end of the day, we just do what we can do and so.
I know I've had the conversations with Tammy and I've always had a hard time saying no. So I, I find writing or contributing to this memo very difficult. It's not something staff wishes to see happen because all the projects are important, the reason why they're on the list and, and many other important ones get, were cut. So we, we hope we can get back on track, but it is very much a staffing issue at this point. And I know that the plan would be to go back to staff tomorrow to have a little short, quick meeting or, or very quickly, just to reiterate what is the plan, one that will re, continue to reassess. And likely there'll be some, a little bit more back and forth. Right now with staff, we're trying to do those projects that are small and we'll say easy to tick off, we're getting those ones done. Example of auto flusher or gate valves or water main leaks because we know that the summer will be very important for those projects that still remain on the list. So we're certainly trying the best we can. I know that those that I work with are great all the way across the board. So I'm just hoping that we can get through the summer as unscathed as possible. But there will be, you know, some, another look in, in summer, after summer.
Councilor?
We've always had and I've always fought against the amount of carryover that we had each year that didn't get done, that hasn't got done, year after year after year. And this year I was hoping that we would want to hire more staff so this would allow time to get it done. But then we didn't hire the staff. We approved a bigger budget and it just doesn't seem like we, we have to do something to get more staff. And I mean, the other crew that we had hoped for, but was removed from the budget. It'd probably be easier to remove some projects and hire staff than it would be to keep removing projects and coming in and carry forward it year after year after year. It'd be nice to be things done when they should be done, as required that they should be done, rather than continually carry forward. And that's happened for 12 years. We've got to address that.
So I will say, just in terms of staffing, since the budget was approved, everything does take time. So we were able to go through the process of the, to, to ensure full-time employment for two of the part-time employees. We've then hired one part-time employee, which really was a shift from one department to another. So now we have a hole somewhere else that we have to fill. We are in the process of, we've, we have the interview set for the, the developments engineers, technician. We have the, because we are unfortunately losing a great public works foreman, on June 3rd, we have interview set for that position by hopefully the end of the month, I believe, if I remember correctly. And the other part-time positions that were approved, those interviews should be taking place after that, I think, the, the week of June 6th. So the staffing, even though we've tried to start that as quickly as possible, it does take time. So hopefully by, when we have this discussion again, likely at the end of summer, we'll have filled all of those necessary gaps that I think there'll, there, there may be an additional ripple effect if somebody moves from one department to another and then it just keeps going until we have those filled from outside. But we are working on it.
Any more questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor?
I would move council for the town of Bridgewater and Doris to revise capital plan priority list as contained in document 22-091 as a measure to address the vacancy in the engineering position with the engineering department.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McDonald, had a good discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Thank your team for me too, please.
Well, definitely.
10.2, notice amendments to policy 57, low income tax exemption. So we're just giving, giving notice. So this will come back the next council meeting. And this is to look at increasing the exemption amounts. So unless anyone has any questions, is someone prepared to make that motion? Councilor?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the municipal government act that at the June 13th, 2022 council meeting, amendments to policy 57, low income tax exemption will be considered to enable increased exemption amounts.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner, discussion? Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Our next item is 10.3, amendments to policy 89. Again, this is notice and this is taxi fare rates.
Yeah.
And this is kind of the same thing. This will come back the next council meeting to revise the taxi rates. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Councilor?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the municipal government act that the June 13th, 2022 council meeting amendments to policy 89, these will be considered to enable revised taxi rates.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Now we have application to purchase land, lot 67 Glen Allen Drive. Can you move that for me, sir? So just the application. It's not like sales. We might have to go back and describe the.
Do you want me to?
Well, we have it in, we have it in our.
Yes, you have.
Yeah, we all have it.
We can do it that way if you wish.
Yeah, that's good.
So in terms of background, a completed application to purchase land and a written offer of $46,580 was received for, for lot 67 on Glen Allen Drive by staff on April 25th, 2022. And the application, lot diagram and letter of offer are attached to the staff report as appendix A. The prospective buyer, Mr. Ankit Kumar, has offered to purchase lot 67 for $46,580 plus HST. He intends to construct a single-family home or potentially a two-unit detached structure, both of which are permitted uses for the property.
infilling to bring to street level, street grade, and connections to municipal services will also be required for development. Terms of pricing, just by way of some background, the 2018 land sales policy for Glen Allen recommended selling land at $2,450 per linear meter of street frontage for development-ready sites. The lot in question has 30.5 meters of frontage, and therefore, a calculated price of $74,725 as, based on that policy. More recently, in 2021, the Young Associates appraisal valued the property at $25,000, or $2,000 per square foot. The size of the lot is 12,429 square feet, and the price of $46,580 represents a balance between the above previous valuations, and is a reflection of more recent market changes and the, and the current state of the lot. So in terms of implications, the net proceeds of the sale would be deposited to the capital reserve fund as required by section 99, 99 rather, of the MGA, and there are no real estate brokerage commissions to pay. In terms of legal, there will be legal costs associated with preparation of the agreement of purchase and sale, and buyback agreement, and recording the de-transfer, and work plan items, it's related to land sales, so. In terms of the options that would be available, one would be to obviously accept the offer and authorize execution of the PSA and buyback agreement. Secondly, to make a counteroffer for staff to present back to the prospective buyer, or to decline the offer. And staff's recommendation is that council accept the $46,580 offer and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement with Mr. Ankit Kumar for the lot 67 Glen Allen Drive. Buyback agreement terms to require commencement of construction within 12 months from date of permit issuance, and completion of both housing units within 24 months of the commencement of construction.
Thank you. Questions from council? Comments? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Frazier?
Yes, I'll make a motion, your worship. That council for the town of Bridgewater accept the $46,580 offer and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement with Ankit Kumar for lot 7, sorry, for lot 67 Glen Allen Drive, including buyback agreement terms requiring commencement of construction within 12 months from date of permit issuance, and completion of both housing units within 24 months of the commencement of construction.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Caldwell. Further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And our next item is 11.1, proposed land sales policy.
Okay, so we'll get that on the wall. I guess just in terms of background to get started, we've reviewed some of this previously, but the land sales function is returned to the municipal unit roughly five years ago with the winding down of the Bridgewater Development Association. And certainly, policy development has now become a bit of a requirement for the exit 12A project and the expansion of the business park, and related marketing and sales functions, which remain a strategic priority for council in '22, '23. Essentially, the purpose of the policy is to define, define the town's land sales process, to clarify how council will set land pricing, to provide for periodic adjustment and review of prices based on prevailing market conditions and the cost of land development, and to facilitate, provide an orderly process, rather, to facilitate new employment, business creation, industrial, and commercial growth through leveraging the business park's land base. In terms of the scope of the policy, it entails and covers all land owned by the town of Bridgewater and contained within the Bridgewater Business Park. It also can be, added, other lands, rather, zoned, commercial, industrial, owned by the town, can be added to the policy's scope by council at a future time. And all town employees and any contracted professionals involved in business park land sales fall within the scope of the policy. And in terms of the summary of the policy, essentially, it commits the town to the pursuit of further development within a well-planned, phased approach considering infrastructure availability and capacity. Provides pricing based on market value, adherence to the municipal government act, and recovery of development costs as much as is reasonably possible. Lot pricing on a per-square-meter basis, approved by town council and reviewed annually. I think I might have skipped one there. So the policy also enables and authorizes the CAO to negotiate additional terms and conditions deemed in the town's best interest in terms of factors such as employment, growth potential, business compatibility, and related matters. And sales transactions exceeding a 15% variance from the lot pricing established by town council shall require further council approval. All other sales administered by the CAO based on established pricing. So to conclude that, council essentially retains ultimate responsibility for all agreements of purchase and sale, and the conditions and obligations contained therein. The economic development officer or other designate will maintain adherence to this policy in all transactions, and the CAO or designate shall report all completed land transactions to town council.
Questions? Mr. Brown? Questions? Pretty straightforward. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn? Thank you.
I would move that town council, the town of Bridgewater, improve the land sales policy as presented in document 22-031A as policy 110 for the town, effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. That's good. That's a really good. I feel, I feel like that was a long time coming on land sales policy, so that's good. 11.2, council size review, municipal boundary review. Mr. Hurdle?
I'm going to part the table. I don't know why everyone else doesn't do this. That's why these chairs are here, right?
You know what? It's two years of having two podiums, and I think that's probably why.
That's right. Thank you, your worship. Council, we'll recall that at the April 4th discussion session, I brought a report asking for direction on the undertaking of the 2022 municipal boundary review. For the purposes of public information, every eight years, each municipality in Nova Scotia is required, under the municipal government act, to execute a review of this kind. In Bridgewater's particular case, where we are a more urban municipality, we're not so much, like other districts are, looking at wards and how population shifts within, say, a rural municipality. But for our purposes, we're essentially looking at a review of the size of council in 2022, and whether or not our community feels the number of town councillors is appropriate for a community of our size, and with the needs that we have. So as part of the direction coming out of that discussion session, council asked me to essentially take the approach that we would be doing a staff-led review of town council size during the 2022 review. And the first step of that is getting a public engagement plan approved by council. So that's what's in the document package tonight. So to briefly summarize, the proposed public engagement plan would include a brief survey that would be available online and in print in the bridge, that will ask residents to indicate if they're satisfied with the number of town councils for Bridgewater, if they wish to see a change, if so, what that change would be, and generally, how they feel the community could benefit from that change. That survey will also be available through the town of Bridgewater's social media channels, as well as Bridgewater's app. In order to reach a broader audience, you know, folks who aren't necessarily engaged in reading print media or doing online things, we're also going to include a dedicated period at two town council meetings, tentatively scheduled for August 8th and September 12th, where we will set aside a period of time at the start of the council meeting, where the mayor will invite anyone who wishes to comment on the municipal boundary review to come forward. They'll have two minutes to provide any comments that they wish to provide at that time. Staff will record those and incorporate those into a future report once this process is complete. We will also be issuing the invitation to the public to provide written input. Should they not wish to complete a survey, they could simply write a letter and either send that to town hall here at 60 Pleasant Street, or drop it off with our front counter staff, or after hours in the drop box outside of our main entrance. And the other element that we're looking at incorporating that staff are recommending is an open house evening event. Again, kind of designed for folks who, you know, may have trouble getting out and connecting during the daytime. We thought that having an evening event at Desprezay Museum in July or August, the schedule of that exact date is still pending at this time, but it would allow the public to come in and, again, provide comment. It can allow staff to provide a bit of background on this process and talk about how Bridgewater stacks up compared to other communities of equal size throughout the province as well. And we can have a good conversation with folks who want to come to that public event, and then include those findings in their report as well.
That's great. Any questions on that? Councilor McDonald?
I'd say that that's very inclusive. It really provides opportunity for people in all different situations to participate. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
No, I echo that for sure. Any other? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Caldwell?
I move the council for the town of Bridgewater approve the public engagement plan for the 2022 municipal boundary review in the town of Bridgewater as outlined in document 21-168B, and direct staff to proceed with executing the plan.
Thank you. Seconded by Tiffany Mary Tanner. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last item on the agenda is proposed summer council meeting schedule. So every year we do this, we, we do reduce a couple of meetings, not much, but we do make this a motion of council. The other thing I do want to note is, our, our last meeting in June is being moved from the Monday to the Tuesday. We are excited that there will be a prom this year, and, and so that's on the Monday, and we've got councillors with family that are going to be there, and that's really important. We have some councillors with other obligations, and so it was, it's just better to move the meeting to the Tuesday. So I'm assuming there won't be any objection to that. I'm just excited that there's a prom, and proper, proper prom, and proper graduation this year, so. As a parent of two kids who, neither of whom got that graduation, I'm just, I'm elated for these, these youth. Anyway, and the summer meeting schedule's in there too. So is someone prepared to make a motion to approve the meeting schedule? By Tiffany Mary Tanner?
Oh, okay. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve the proposed summer meeting schedules outlined in document 22-093, and hold discussion sessions on July 4th and August 2nd, and council meetings on July 11th and August 8th. And further, that council postpone the regularly scheduled June 27th, 2022 council meeting to Tuesday, June 28th, 2022.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, folks. That concludes our meeting. I have a motion to adjourn. Councilor Thorburn, seconded by Councilor Conklin. We are adjourned.